Good morning, everybody. We start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. Now I'm in the bathroom outside.
Always good. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Rockland County Commissioners Meeting on November 30th, 2023. In attendance, we have Paige Bartra, Detective Sonia, we have Sheraton Slayas, Julia Hoyt, June Gates, Chuck Nicholson, Leila Matia.
Matia.
Matia. Why do I have time for this? We have Commissioner Godu, and then we have Jim Hadley from Northwood as a guest, and we have former Commissioner Tom Tomorello has come to business. That's who we have inside. And Zoom, we have Commissioner Boyle.
Good morning.
Yeah, we have Allison Kowalski, Superintendent Henry, Kathy Stacy, unregistered leads, and we have Jason Smith. Did I forget anybody? No. Okay. So first up, we have our three openings and awards. We're posted later.
I think you're looking at the wrong.
I'm looking at the minutes. Sorry.
No openings. We can move right to the consent agenda.
Yeah.
That I move to approve the November 16th public meeting, public minutes and the November 30th public and non-public meeting minutes.
Second, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there any conditions, subtractions, corrections for the minutes? If not, on the motions, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
An O P S, adult medical daycare grant request for Silverthorn approval?
I move to approve an adult medical daycare grant dated December 4th, 2023 to Silverthorn for requested equipment.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Um, yeah, there's no dollar amount connected to this, and I think there ought to be.
I also had some questions with respect to the dollar amount because there was sort of, the support documentation was a little confusing. In one, it said initially, it said it sounded like from the memo, it was a total of $4,000, $2,000 for the chairs. But then below, there was also, there were the chairs and then the cabinet, then the chair, the desk, and the cabinet.
Right, they didn't add up.
So the other thing I was confused about is it seemed like it further in the support, there was reference to power lift chairs and more than one cabinet. So where did we land?
I'm gonna ask Jason Smith. Do you wanna say something, Jason?
From what I'm understanding, it was two cabinets and two chairs. I just have put the request forward that they submitted. I can go back out to them and ask for clarification on the items if you wish.
No power chairs.
Also, the power chairs have been eliminated and removed as they already received those.
So at this point, I'd move to, I'm gonna move to amend my motion, and I move to amend the award of $4,000 to Silverthorn for one easy tilt rolling shower chair, one accessible height adjustable chair, and two storage cabinets for a total of $4,000.
Okay. Did you, do you have a second on that? What, do you have more discussions?
I, I, I have a different opinion on how that should be handled.
Do you wanna share it with us or?
Yes, I think that this should be tabled until next week, and we should ask Silverthorn to give us a better detailed list of the items and the exact numbers that it's going to cost. When I did the math, it didn't add up. I fully support giving them the money for this grant, but it's not adding up, and I wanna make sure they get everything that they need. But they need to give us the proper documentation to back it up, to back it up. So I would, I would request that we table it and ask, request them to give us some better documentation.
And I'd second that.
Okay, so the motion to table was made and seconded. There's no discussion on that. So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yes, I'll say that for next time. All right, payrolls.
I move to approve the payroll expense in the amount of $1,563,212.04 for the period ending December 1st, 2023.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and discussion?
Um, I know you have an answer for us, but why are we $200,000 higher than usual?
Um, I did send, well, I only sent to Leila, but longevity primarily.
Yeah, we got.
Longevity, $3,150 discretionary bills for all the LTC unions, 64-8, union holiday payouts. Some of the CBAs have that, so $18,500. Holiday year-end payouts, the same few unions have that going as well. So that's over $9800. We had one employee separation payout that a bit of holiday time that was $8,400. So that's $4,650 plus related payroll expenses.
Thank you. I just wanted you to say why.
Okay.
Just thank you. That analysis, you know, it was very helpful to get that email just because I think we all had the same question. So it was nice to see that. I assumed it was related to some of the holiday payout, but it was nice to see it detailed. So thank you.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I'm gonna, yes. All right, we're at reports. Commissioner Coyle, do you have anything you wanna share?
Just, I'll just dovetail with Kathy Stacy announced that there was another big, we got a big transfer tax out of Greenland. Also, just in this month in Portsmouth, there was a $6 million, almost $6 million residential condo as well as another about $4 million residential sale. So although all the reports are in terms of, as it relates to us for transfer tax revenue generation, we are, the market's the lowest it's been in a decade, but we're probably being bolstered by ongoing large transactions.
Definitely. Anything, do you have anything additional? Just wanna point that, okay, Commissioner Godu, do you have anything?
Nothing this week.
Okay, and I think I'm pretty much on set as well. So we're gonna go to Human Resources, Center for Occupational and Employee Health, help watch E A P contract.
Sure. I move to extend the current contract with Center of Occupational and Employee Health Services to, for onsite mental health clinician services through April 30th, 2024, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second motion, we made it and seconded. Any discussion?
How's that going?
Yes, Commissioner Coyle?
Allison, how's that going?
You know, it's had a slow start, but we do have people seeing it, but they've been helping. We had two big thing referrals, and they were very helpful through those referrals. So I wanna give them a little bit of time because we were supposed to start in January because of just the construction and finding a place. Now we have a little bit of an open window where they can go to the specific departments for the department. I know Long Term Care had said they wanted them in, and I think Jason Henry said they could go to one of their supervisors just to kind of identify who they are and what services and what they can provide. So I think it would be a win-win for us to just try to kind of see and balance it out through April and then reassess.
Okay, further discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And, yes, requested position brighter than consumed.
I move to approve allowing two individuals to hold the buildings and grounds technician position concurrently for a period not to exceed six weeks through an end date of February 2nd, 2024.
There are both, and second, is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Yes. Next, revised job description, facilities operation?
I move to approve a revised job description for Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT effective December 7th, 2023, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
There are a few things in here that I just would like to understand. In the position summary, which is the first paragraph, we've eliminated ensures the highest level of efficiency, safety, and compliance in the operation of Engineering and Maintenance Service Department for the county complex by performing the following duties. That was eliminated. I'm trying to understand what the reason for that being eliminated was.
That language, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Allison.
I apologize. That language is contained further down as part of the essential functions of the role. We captured it down in the embodiment of what is those functions that she has to be able to maintain and do. That position has to be able to maintain and do.
And Commissioner, it's right there. If you, after, under essential job functions, there's like the first sentence of purple and then the second block, it's, it's in, in that section.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so it's really not missing. Okay, also, under required education and experience, we're asking for a bachelor's degree instead of an associate's degree as a requirement. And I'm trying to, and it says bachelor's degree in related field. This could be tradesmen that are subcontractors and might not have done a lot of education or that type of formal schooling that still could be very well qualified. And I'm questioning what degree would be a degree in a related field of a bachelor's degree that we would, I wanna make sure that we're not making the bar too high so that we don't, you know, we have difficulty attracting somebody in the event that we need to. And I hope we don't need to for a long time, but we're, that's the existing job description. So I'd just like to know the thinking on that.
Yeah, so this is a very high-level position, and I'm doing that based on what the market is detailing out there as well in the Labor, Department of Labor and Standards. So we also, I believe it says bachelor's degree, and then it goes down, and if I don't have it in front of me, and I apologize. It does go on to say, if I'm not mistaken, that an equivalent education and/or experience would be considered for that role. So we're not dovetailing it into a specific bachelor's degree in the facility side of things, but we should have something that business degree could be in there as well because there's a lot of financial aspects of things to this. But we are trying to move it up because I think the associate directors, the assistant directors, I think we have, I'd have to go in, let me see, or I can come back to it. We have a requirement. So that's the thinking of that. We're trying to kind of mirror it up due to the level and the complexity of what that job means. It doesn't, but that's kind of where we've gone with it.
And does the director hold a bachelor's degree now?
Yes, she does. Thank you for that. Yes.
Okay, further comments?
Uh, there was one more in the very, towards the end. We eliminated the ability to develop and apply strategic planning skills to advance the department. That was removed. Maybe isn't, is it somewhere else? And I'm missing it. It seems like that's normal verbiage for this kind of position.
I apologize. I'm just trying to pull it up right now.
It's under required competencies about a third of the way down from the top.
I'm grabbing it. Bear with me. I apologize.
I'm sorry, what, what, can you repeat that, Commissioner?
Under required competencies, knowledge, skills, and abilities, about a third of the way down, it reads, and it's been eliminated from the requirement, ability to develop and apply strategic planning skills to advance the department.
It's up, just go up to the top. It's already there. It's just that where it was plugged in was removed. If you go up like five lines, it's right there.
Thank you.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I wrote it, yes. All right, you're on to, I'm gonna have updates in a minute. Kathy, you there? I'm gonna go to you first, Kathy.
Well, good morning, everybody. You know, it's business as usual over here. That transaction that did go through again was a cash deal for $33,250,000 cash.
$33 million?
They ran suitcases?
Imagine. Times are good, times are good for business people. Anyway, that's pretty much all I have to.
Okay.
To say, I know that Block Five did call to arrange to have a luncheon for staff, and that's gonna take place on the 20, wait a minute, the 19th of this month. I thought that was very nice. I think he probably does it for all the departments, but anyway. You should notice if you wanna come over and say hi, come over and say hi, everybody.
Thank you. Superintendent Henry?
Good morning. Right now, the count inside now is like 1:42, which is typical around this time of year. The courts don't like putting anybody in for the holiday season, so we'll have a lull, and then we'll pick back up after the holidays. But what we have seen is, and we, I mean, the Sheriff's Department is uptick in people trying to bring drugs inside of here. Some good-sized quantities of Suboxone and a nice size cocaine fentanyl mixture, so we've had uptick on that. We've been working with the Sheriff's Department. They were here the other day helping us search inside the building, which went very well. So that's been good. Overall, our AB unit that has been working on for, with Jude, her department, and Officer Evans, we should have that unit fully up and running by Tuesday or Wednesday next week, which will be very helpful because we can get people back into those, the suicide prevention cells actually have the cameras in it, those kinds of things. So staff's looking forward to that because we have some people that belong in those areas. And beyond that, that's, you know, getting through the holiday season next week. I think we have a little holiday party here for command staff up here, a little Yankee swap. And we have some things for the staff to give out a little towards Christmas, so that we got going on. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Jason Smith?
Morning. Good morning, Commissioners. We have a few COVID cases and a few staff with flu. And, but overall, we're maintaining well. Our infection prevention protocols are mitigating and controlling any further spread. Let's see, last Thursday, we had our COVID clinic. We had 23 staff members receive the COVID vaccination, and we'll probably have another one coming up next month as well. More information will come around that. Glendale Dining Services has hired a new general manager. Elena has started this week, and so I'm very happy to have some leadership and guidance in that department once again. Moving forward, we have our annual Stere Cycle training on infection prevention and standards, OSHA standards for CMS guidance. So we'll be doing that today. We have our mock survey taking place in our assisted living community. We're waiting for final report on that. So we look forward to our results. In addition to that, we had our risk assessment completed by Pendulum Risk Management Services. The overall, the assessment went very well, a few recommendations, and we're waiting for final report. I also provided you with our employee newsletter and this week's board report and our community outreach for family members and individuals on our waitlist. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Allison.
Good morning. I've been working with the two unions for negotiation stock dates. Our recognition items through the Opera Funds are out through December. The push for evaluations, the outstanding ones, thank you, everybody, for heating and trying to get those evaluations into us. Any December evaluations must be into the department by the 15th so that we can process some before year end. So if anybody still has any outstanding evaluations that go back beyond November, we need those in there by tomorrow. I've worked on four or five personnel matters that we're dealing with. We're revising the vaccination policy with Lisa Hewitt, Jason, Kim Cataldo. We're preparing now HR for our insurance utilization review that'll take place on January 18th with Gallagher and the wellness gifts to the employees that will be going out, the beanie, hats, or caps will, should be coming in the end of this week or the first of next week, and we'll distribute them to all departments on December 18th. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Ellen. I'm gonna go to Jude Gates.
Good morning, everyone. All's well in facilities. We are busy as usual. Not a lot new to report. We have DES has hired an entity to come out. US EPA is doing a huge review about lead in piping. About 10 years ago, they did a lot with solder and fixtures, and now they're doing piping. So we're meeting with them tomorrow to find out what their expectations are for us. As Jason noted, the jail is wrapping up very nicely. Our annual fire alarm testing, my apologies to everyone who's been listening to it for two weeks, is also wrapping up. There were a few findings. We have a number of heat detectors that are aging out, so it's probably gonna be a project we're looking at for next year. As far as it goes, by all accounts, the well testing went very well. DES was here Friday, seemed very satisfied. They wrapped up the test on Monday, did final water samples for us and the neighbors, and we're just gonna wait for direction from DES now. We did hear from DOT this week. They just had a few small questions remaining with regard to that driveway, so that is finally moving as well. We'd really like that to be in place for winter to get the stuff, you know, an easier route for the materials to be moved in. Other than that, I thank you for allowing us to have two people filling that ground slot for a few weeks.
Yeah.
The outgoing employee has been with us for 40 years.
Wow.
And just absolutely does everything on autopilot. It's not even like you could say, hey, this is what he used to do because he's just, you've been doing it for so long. So I think it'll be really valuable to have someone shadowing him for, you know, a few weeks to get him up to speed. I'm hoping he may stay with us for maybe a day a week per diem going forward because that's one of those jobs where every season has a different assignment. So other than that, we're doing well, getting ready for the holidays as well. Thank you.
Shark, excellent.
Busy as usual, surprise. Thank you to.
Gonna make a T-shirt.
Busy as usual. Thank you to the folks in my department involved in payroll processing because there are lots of things that went through the payroll this time around, has already covered them. And also, also work still continues as far as the Cross Workforce Central transition to UKG Pearl Dimensions.
We should be up and running by January?
Well, what will happen is that middle of January, we'll start having employees punch, and there will be training that will be given. Obviously, those individuals are actually gonna, being front-end users, won't see as much of a change as those of us who are working behind the scenes, working on processing whether benefits or payroll itself. We are going to be setting up meetings with department heads and those payroll letters pretty soon because they have to get familiar with how it might work for entering in schedules or changing schedules or doing transfer rules for, you know, time cards or whatever. So that training will be, will be out before we do more of the rank and file kind of individuals. So we really just have to worry about using the time clock. What does the new app go look like? Because the new app actually has lots of nice features on it, and it looks better than the current one as well. So the, that's, and then the, the target date is April, I'm sorry, February 1st and later frame, check dates would be processed with UKG price. So that's the, the reason why punches happen, obviously, is that our, that paid period for the first, by the payroll in February starts about mid-January, so. And just overall, the normal grant busyness, we still don't have any sort of draft agreement even from, for that pilot program grant from the HHS. They still, and then they came back recently saying if there's some other costs or items you want to try to get included in there, and we had further questions about that, what's truly eligible that they're gonna allow us to put in, and they haven't come back yet with responses.
So on that particular point, there was a very good article in the union leader that the state is being sued for this home healthcare thing because of staffing that they can't get. So they're being sued currently, and I just noticed the article that I was a little bit taken aback because the last thing that I wanna say is the county getting sued. But anyway, keep us posted as the, when that program.
Yeah, that was, that was pointing that that's still been in limbo. I think we're very close to actually getting the official award from the Hampshire DES on the cyber program, cyber grant. There was this one last thing that they asked for, for like a worker's comp certificate, and things for self-insured. We don't have such a thing, so basically a statement just had to be provided saying that we're self-insured, which the Hampshire DOL already knows, in that we have excess workers' comp coverage, which they were already provided with the certificate for.
Yeah.
But so hopefully, very soon, we should have the final agreement for that and get the dollars in, and then Robin can work on doing the purchasing for that as far as for water, wastewater, cybersecurity. But that said, we too also have a small holiday party in Yankee Swamp next week, so. And that's, I'm, I'm good.
Sure.
Morning. Dispatch, we're getting there. We do have one application in. He's from out of state. It's experienced dispatcher. It's just the timing of when he can hopefully come to work for us. But it's a lot of hard work by the, by the county, you know, with all the PR and marketing and everything else, but it's looking very well in this.
Will he fall?
If, if, if the ones that we have currently have start dates and conditional offices on make it entirely through training, and then this out-of-state individual, which they're expecting to move here in about March, that would put us at full staff.
That's nice. So that's gonna be the first time in a lot of four-year haven, right? So then, while we're waiting, like I said, we're waiting for this other one to come in from out of state. It's probably gonna be about a couple of months, but still, I mean, we're, we're getting there. And I really appreciate all the help that all the county commissioners gave, the volume, you know, gave us, you know, the help to get this fully staffed. We continue to be extremely busy in our drug unit. When it comes to the jail, we did do a, helped the jail with the sweep the other day. It's good that corrections and the sheriff's office get along. We had a meeting the other day with them. It's extremely important that both our agencies work together as a team. I think we get better results. We had Jason, his major, came to Rockland County Chiefs meeting the other day with us to get, you know, get in tune with what's going on with the county. But it's, 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 you know, we have a great superintendent over there. He does a great job. He really looks out for, for the county, and it's just really, it's really nice to come to work every day, and everybody's just getting watched along this county. We've been assisting a lot of local police departments. We were in Salem last night from 4:00 to 8:00. We didn't pull you over to see you, but speaking of that. But.
This time.
But they, they had a meeting. They asked the couple for, we've been helping a lot of other towns so they can have their Christmas parties and stuff, so we put out for them to, actually, the town's gonna help us out for a Christmas thing that we're doing. But it's, it's nice that we're all working together with law enforcement. All the other thing is we're waiting for January on transport, but we'll see by fire alarms. And we're waiting for January on, we know we're gonna be extremely busy in January once these new laws go into effect, otherwise than that, all I have to say, thank you.
Just one note, you may have seen in the news, there was an article regarding a case out in New York where they actually found and recovered, and recovered the body that was disposed of in New Hampshire. One of our deputies on our Major Offenders Task Force was a part of that task force that resulted in the investigation of those people being charged with the murder of that individual and the recovering of their body.
So we're everywhere. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Jim, do you have anything? I'm gonna ask you because you're here. Leila, you have anything? Uh, okay, so I think I got everybody. Let's go to business. Anyone have anything for anything? Mr. McCoyle, do you have anything?
Presentation for new business.
I'm sorry.
The Community Power Plan presentation.
Yeah, we can do that. We can do that. So we're gonna do, Jim Hadley is here. And he is going to, he was here last month, I believe, and we just started to scratch the surface of Community Power. We invited him back. We get a little bit more detail. And so he's here today, so he's gonna do a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chandler. For the record, my name is Jim Anthony. Clearly currently service of all to chair the Northwood Community Power Committee. I don't have enough handouts, but. I'm also expecting Henry from Community Power.
Okay.
From here, sorry, to come here shortly. But in the meantime. I was here last back in October twenty-sixth, I think it was, I had asked, the commissioner is to look into joining Community Power. And if you look at this guy here on the background page. Middle, it's going down, it shows Cheshire County. And these are the towns so far that have joined, that have developed. And what that does, rather than a town having to develop their own community power plan with all its users, etc. It has to go to the Public Utilities Commission. If Rocky County joins, this is twenty-five dollar annual membership. And then any town that hasn't been a joint in Rocky County join under the So I also gave you the last one. The towns in Rocky County. You know, the households, yeah, etc. You know, compared to EverSource rates. So right now it's thirty-two point one, I think, and Community Power is ten point nine percent. So uh, the worksheet just shows EverSource. When they raised their rates back in January of twenty-three, went up twenty-seven percent or even more. And then when they reduce their rate, every six months they get new rates inside of August of twenty-three, it went down. So the average cost is hundred fifty-seven dollars per household as opposed to two hundred six dollars. So all the towns in Rocky County, just the housing units alone. We're gonna save about forty million dollars. You know, sticking with EverSource for that two-six month period. So what Community Power will do, it'll give you lower rates, customer choice, local control and possibly clean energy. So what we're looking at is Rocky County to assist the other towns, there's eight towns, there's municipalities that so far had their community power plans approved by the Public Utilities Commission. And I showed those in bold on this worksheet. So this will give the smaller towns the opportunity to get lower rates as well. And to those towns that haven't joined, it would be the least, at the least resistance. Like I'm a committee of one right now. I think I mentioned that last time I was here. I thought before I select for a couple times, I'm still a committee of one. So this would allow us to at least move forward and not have to develop the plan, get it approved by Public Utilities Commission. So as of yesterday, I checked the docket with the Public Utilities Commission. Town of Plasto is the only one that has something that can do their plan before the Public Utilities Commission. So this should be a big help to the smallest communities or Rockland County join. There's a joint powers of agreement. Community Power. That's just a copy and I think I emailed to Monk, a copy of Cheshire County's Community Power Plan. There, there was approved by a county delegation. Henry hopefully.
Oh, I already have that.
And then when Henry comes, he'll go through the the actual overview of how to develop the plan and get it approved. So. And I noticed you do have public comment. I just wanna mention Northwood. They announced the tax rate yesterday. Good news and also good news. The good news was Rocky County's tax rate went down nine point two percent. And municipal tax went up forty-five percent. So I wanna thank the commissioners and department heads for their due diligence on.
Numbers are fantastic from the county over the last four years, basically, basically funded. But I did notice eight communities, actually their taxes, county tax, because they're down. So I, I mean, it's true, it's to the economy.
Yeah, well, I was going down with nine point two percent. Our local education tax went up.
Oh, the, the, also sign?
Yeah, I'm trying not to look for the state educators sign up.
Yep, so I was just telling, like, Commissioner, I gotta do early on that last year, the state actually gave all the community school money. But this year, they didn't, it was a one-time thing. So you're gonna, you're gonna see a spring. So every community in the state doesn't have that on the state education side. It's a big turnaround just since. Mr. McCoyle, had or?
Um, I just had a couple of questions. But I don't know, I don't wanna interrupt if you're depending on where you are in your presentation. So if you'd like to.
Go ahead.
Okay, so who manages the program? Or is it?
It's self-funded. It doesn't cost, right, it wouldn't cost Rocky County any cost and it's managed by Community Power of New Hampshire. A nonprofit organization. They would, you know, notify the utility. And then, you know, they would find out who all the customers are and then the customers would have the option to either opt in or opt out of, of this program. And the only time that a county or municipality would go ahead and launch a program would be if the rates were less than what the Unitil or EverSource under Intercol.
Okay, and then, so for county members, so towns or, you know, you have that list of Exeter, Portsmouth, Rye are already operating, New Market, Constratum are starting. How does it work for those communities? Would they opt out or would they be rolled into the, the county program if we did this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna turn this over to Henry from Community Power, but I believe if a, if a municipality goes ahead and approves it, either the governing body, selectmen or town council in the town meeting vote, then within thirty days or forty-five days, each resident in small business in that municipality would get a notice to either opt in or opt out of the program.
So on, on that particular note, so the town of Derry has voted, they're using a company called Standard Power. They voted already, so the town itself is already set up. And I, I do see enforcement there. I don't know, Commissioner Foyle, what, what the city is doing, if it's very similar. Seems like some of the larger communities may have been ahead of this, this, but smaller communities probably will benefit from it. And, you know, I guess the question maybe becomes is, you know, who do you use as the company? So if the county is to set up and we use Community Power, uh, that means anybody, any of the other towns would either have, if they join the county's program, they would be under Community Power. Or they probably have the option to do things themselves if they set up, am I correct?
Yes.
So, um, I, I, it's interesting as, as Commissioner Foyle pointed out, enforcement, Rye, and Exeter says it's launched already. I know Derry's there. And my understanding is obviously the more people that, the more people that are involved with, let's say, Community Power, the better buying power leverage they would have. And, and and I think each company is sort of different. As you mentioned, Community Power is a nonprofit. Which, which is nice on its own. I don't think Standard Power, they run for profit. Uh, and they're buying their, their power in blocks, I don't know, six months or, or longer, I don't know. So it's, it's all different. And I, I, that was a question that I had, which was very similar, you know, what obligation does the county, Rocky County have if we were to form this? This rule, what's our obligation?
Let, let me turn it over to Henry. I'm right up over here, that's.
Yeah, actually, you can sit right here if you want. Apologize, I appear to be a.
We start, they started early. Yeah, we were. So, um, yeah, I'm here hearing it. I work for Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. This is a nonprofit that was established by counties, cities, and towns in the state of New Hampshire for the specific purpose of providing Community Power service. Uh, currently servicing fourteen or fifteen um, programs across the state, about eighty thousand electric customers. And they're here on behalf of Coalition to extend an invitation to Rocky County and the commissioners um, to become a member of the organization, to participate in its services for planning for and launching a program should you choose to do so. I have a little bit of a presentation. I don't know if we need to go through all of the one-on-ones, but what would be most appropriate for them?
Uh, I mean, I think a lot of us are, it's a, it's a new understanding, so maybe you can do a share of the basics.
I've got one-on-one kind of questions, so. Please start from the beginning.
So I'm sorry, I did send late yesterday others for my slides. I don't know if we can come there, but I, I have a couple of comments. So just. Yeah, so I guess I can, I can start from the top and really just, I don't need to lecture, but we're gonna have a conversation, go as you go and. This is. There it is, great.
I do still have one quick question. If the county opted in, would that make all the, all the households within the county eligible automatically? Or would individual towns still have to pursue that?
That's a great question. That's probably really the main question. So technically, under legislation, this county could influence a program and automatically switch all the default electric customers into that program and all of it. That's not how we Cheshire is the one example on that's up and running. And what they did is they influenced a program and then like that, any customer could choose to come in, so it becomes available to every customer, which is a good value. That's, it makes it a much more quickly available to any customer. And any town could try vote at their select board, the local governing body, vote to uh, enroll all the customers, to say all of our customers are now gonna have the default provided to be in Rocky County program. So it makes it, it's a more streamlined model. Any individual town, they would do this, this probably has been discussed, but they have to develop their own plan, go through approval process, go through regulatory process, go to town meeting.
Well, and that, and that's why I just, you, you actually happen to have like three chairmans of boards of selectmen in this room as well. And I, I look at it as like, if you did this and this automatically makes it available to the citizens of the town where we don't have to go through a separate process. I think that's fantastic if they can voluntarily opt in. And it seems like it could be a benefit to the county to offer that if they.
Yeah, so just to let you know from, this happened in Derry, maybe that was four months ago. The big question, Gary, the seven councils have full control, we don't really be doing that, but um, the big debate was whether we were going to do an opt-in or an opt-out for our consumers. And that was where goes a lot of uh, back and forth, you know, and some people just don't like the, the opt-out, like you're gonna switch everybody automatically. And they, you know, and, uh, and then, or let them opt in. The issue, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, is you get more leverage when you have more people in it. And I sort of equated it to the, uh, when you go grocery shopping and you look at the unit price, none really looks at the unit price, maybe some people. They're looking at the bottom line, right? Like, for instance, you open up your electric bill and you look at you know, the two, the two parts of your electric bill, the service and, and the, you know, what you're paying for power. Most people don't, they're just looking at the bottom line. So in Derry, we took, we took the, we're switching everybody in the town in Derry into the new standard power. And if you, you know, if a consumer wants to opt out, then they'll default back to EverSource. Because we felt there was, we were getting a lower rate, you know, so everybody, who's gonna complain about getting a lower rate? But it's a sensitive issue politically, you know, some people have very strong feelings whether you do that. Mr. Bradu?
I, I'd like to request that Henry give us the presentation right from the start. Where it feels like we're starting in the middle. And I think everybody, anybody, the six people who are gonna watch this video, might be interested in really the one-on-one. I think we're starting in the middle. I don't, I, I, I've got like really basic questions that maybe you'll answer, like, how is it organized and, you know, who profits and you know, where do you buy, you know, but I, I'd like, I, if you don't mind, Mr. Chandler, I think it would be great if you gave us the full presentation and then we can have you with questions. If I apply.
Right ahead. Okay. And, yeah, I'll try to move through the materials and if there's something that comes up, we can go on, we're happy to chat about it. And I'll, I'll sort of dive right in with the first slide after this title slide. But maybe before that, just pause on this title slide. So this is a photo of the annual membership meeting, Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. So currently there are fifty cities, towns, and counties that are members. That doesn't mean they're all selling power. About fourteen or fifteen of them are, have operating programs, the others are in the plains. But the, the real purpose of this organization is to have an, a nonprofit created by the cities and towns, accountable to those cities and towns. These are, actually, there's the county commissioner, but there's the green hat from Cheshire County, but these are county commissioners, folks from select boards, city councils, municipal staff who are the membership. They elect the board from among themselves. So the board is governed by the cities and towns. So it's really accountability and transparency are key aspects of this. And they are, you know, we're subject to the right to know law, just as all of our municipal members are, all our books and meetings are open to public. Next slide. So one-on-one, there was legislation bipartisan signed by Governor Shununu. Uh, and it allowed for cities, towns, and counties to become what we call the default electricity provider. Um, so that's the bulk of power purchase. So you can achieve the economy of scale as Chair Andrew Chiao described. The utility companies are always gonna own the grid, deliver the power, earn their revenue on that side of things. So they don't doubt anything. They can see the direct service and then customers can have the lower rates and, and more energy choices. So the RSA is fifty-three E, RSA fifty-three E. And, you know, it's a voluntary program. Nobody has participated and there's no tax monies associated with the program. It's all paid for out of the electricity. Payments, next slide. So this is the members, and it's growing swiftly, but all this now is about eighty-five thousand customers. Uh, and so the scale is larger than Unitil or Liberty, which is smaller to investor utilities in the state. So considerable buying power to, to help bring the cost down for all the customers. And again, the revenues associated with these programs, they're, they're sort of controlled by the nonprofit and by the members, and we'll talk about that. But you can see in green about fourteen or fifteen Y programs. We'll have another nine or ten launching in March and then the red colored towns are preparing for a town meeting or a town council or a, a local legislative body. So Rocky County, here we are. Uh, and this is like a zooming in a little bit. It sounds like, which we discussed, but you've got Exeter, Rye, Portsmouth. They're operating, they're selling power, they're realizing savings. Um, New Market, Constratum are gonna come online this March. And there's a number of the towns, Atkins and Kensington, Hampton Falls, that are in the planning phase. It's actually not shown on this map. There's a couple of towns that are not affiliated with our nonprofit. They're going with a state of power, a private firm. And so there may be other towns that are in some phase of exploring this on this map, not sure. Uh, but all, pause here for a second. So the, the benefit for a county program is all those towns colored in white. It sort of can streamline the access and the benefits to all the individual customers in those towns who one by one by one might wanna choose to opt into a lower rate. And as we discussed, any one of those towns at the select board level, a select board vote then defaults the entire customer base into the program, so a town select board can choose, or an individual customer can choose.
Just a quick question on that, I don't mean to interrupt, but if I don't ask it, I'm gonna get it. What if one town does the opt in, such as Derry, but one town does the opt out? It it's definitely, it could be different than any individual town.
So with this, the town would be voting with regard to a potential county program would be uh an opt out, they would say, we're gonna give this to all our customers on an opt out basis. Uh because where the county establishes the program, it's already an opt in for everyone, so when you create the program, it is an opt in, any customer can opt in. Um and then of the town level decision making would be, do we wanna do nothing, or do we wanna create an opt out program?
So, yeah, I have a question about that too. Um so if the county were to adopt this, do we have to have it as opt out? I mean, we forcing this to each of the towns? To each of the residents?
It's a.
Do they have to opt out if they don't like it? Or can we do it the other way?
So you have a lot of options under the law. Technically, you could implement a program and switch every default customer in the entire county. We don't advise that, that is technically allowed under legislation, but we are not advising that, that is not how it was implemented in Cheshire County.
Are we allowed to do the exact opposite though, make it available so that anyone can opt in?
That's correct, that is how we would have worked it out, like, you would make, you would create a program and then make it opt in, and any individual customer can choose to participate.
So if uh Plasto decides to adopt the program, do they also have the opportunity to just make it opt in, or it sounded like you were describing that they had to all opt out, that they would automatically get placed in there? I just wanna be clear that there's choices here, not we.
There are choices, and at the town level, there's a couple of choices. A town can do it, Plasto could do it self. Uh they could create a committee, develop a plan, go through public meetings, town meeting, regulatory, um and then they would have Plasto need power. Or the town could, uh in that program, I mean, just as we discussed in Derry, technically, they couldn't do it opt in or opt out. We haven't seen any opt in programs in the state, we've had the opt in option for twenty years and nobody ever used it. Essentially, the opt in option, it it's not a viable approach to this, there's, you don't achieve the scale, uh you don't have to buy in power, so and I'll just, I'll spend another second on this opt in, opt out question. Part of the, I think what's helpful for for customers to understand is, everybody is currently in an opt out. They have Eversource as their utility company, they can opt out of that, they can go into the marketplace and shop for another provider. Um so everyone's in an opt out program right now, and what this does is adds another default option, or opt out option.
But.
Can I miss your call?
Yeah, just, but to the extent that I guess my concern is with a opt out, that, you know, to the extent that it conflicts with communities that already have um community power, but maybe with a private broker, then we're adding a burden to those places that may not, you know, they have, everybody has to take an extra step of opting out. Whereas um for, because we're doing the county program as a countywide, thirty seven communities, don't, don't you think that this would be an application where we would get the scale needed for an opt in?
Yeah, I think it's a good point, so uh and there's a couple pieces there maybe, so one, for the towns in green here, Exeter, Portsmouth, Ride, their program under the law, it's a, it takes priority, the municipal program takes priority over the county program, so if Rocky Hill set up a program, would would never affect the programs that already exist on a municipal level, and there's no reason to. For the other towns, um let's say Plasto, as mentioned, um Plasto only, Plasto has the choice, Plasto can choose to to participate in the Rocky Hill program or not. Um so it would have to be, there has to be affirmative buy-in from the town, vote of their town, select board, to participate in the program. It, there's no imposing of any, it's designed very carefully to ensure this is available as an option, any town that wants it, but there's no imposing any hit on anything. Is that it, your question?
Yes, there's a two part, so for, if we so it kind of disregards any of the communities that already have it, just to sum up what you said. But in order to implement this on a county level, the towns have to opt into, they have to vote to participate in the program, and then their constituent, their residents are automatically in unless they opt out.
Yeah, and I'm actually just gonna go ahead and skip ahead a few slides, cause I have a couple of slides on this, so we just, and maybe move slowly so I can I've talked about the board and the rates and et cetera, but I'll run a skip ahead, one more, one more. Uh this is what it looks like in Cheshire, one more slide. Okay, so why do this at a county level? Uh it can streamline it for towns, it takes a lot of the administrative regulatory burden off um in the similar volunteer capacity, and especially if you maybe have one or two towns that are interested, they could plug in with you here at the county level to be a part of the process. Um and it it ensures all electric customers in the entire county have the option to save on their electric bills um from the get go, and on the next slide, I'm gonna talk about that process. Excellent, next slide please. So let me look at my present maybe.
Oh.
One more. It looks like it's changing. Well, I can.
Yeah, we have that.
I can talk through this one, yeah, so I'm looking at.
Can you unmute?
Thanks, Kate.
So there's four steps, uh if the county were to choose to work with Coalition, um we adopt our joint powers agreement, I'll share that document, that's the uh the nonprofit's corporate charter, sort of agreement among all the municipal members to participate in some way small or large in the governance. Um and that's a county commission, you could adopt that agreement, and there's no charge throughout any time, it's just sort of becoming a member of the organization. Um you'd also establish a committee, this is required under the state law. Um so step two is that committee, which we can support fully and resourcefully, um would prepare an electric ender addition plan, again, we have templates that have been proven out in the regulatory process, we work with you to make some minor customizations to that template, and go through public hearings on the plan before uh the legislative body of the county, the county delegation, will vote to adopt that plan. And I think it's a good opportunity to make sure everyone in the county, a lot of the county leadership is aware of, which is, has the opportunity um to, you know, bring it back to their towns. Uh so now you're ready to go, the Public Utility Commissioner will work on that plan in a sixty day period, and we can launch and create this program. Um so now Rocky Hill Community Power exists, we skip one slide ahead, um and one more slide. This is what it now looks like for us, so you have, have Rocky Hill Community Power. Now that governed by select board, the town can vote to join, and um the town could appoint a representative to be a body, reform a committee or a governance body uh to just have oversight and communication uh with regards to the program, so it's very simple from the town's perspective, all the work has been done through our support at the county level. And then for an individual town, it's a select board question, do you want to participate in this program, or do you not want to, and that's up to the town select teams.
So if I could just ask the same question again, cause I'm still a little bit confused. I get it up to the point that the towns decide they wanna opt to join the program. Do the towns have the option to make it opt in or opt out at that level? You you've given me the impression that it's to some disadvantage to only allow, to to set it up as opt in, and I don't understand the disadvantage to the consumer, I only understand the advantage to your, is it a five oh one C three group?
Yeah, five oh four, actually. And it's, it's interesting, cause it's also created under the New Hampshire law, RSA fifty three A, uh which is uh agreements between municipalities, so it's a, it's a municipal organization.
Okay, so we join, a uh a town decides they wanna participate. My question is, do they have an option of how they participate and what would weigh the factors?
Yes.
How they do that?
Yes, their option is to either do nothing, in which case, every individual customer has an opt in option, any customer can opt into the program. That's if the town council does nothing, or the select board does nothing, or the town select board can vote to create an opt in participation, vote to say, we want all of our customers default to be this cheaper rate through Rocky Hill Community Power.
Okay, but you said do nothing.
That's right.
They have to join.
No, they, the cus, any customer in Rockingham County.
You could, you know, any individual.
Any household, any household, any business.
So once Rockingham County sets it up.
Yes.
It's set up so that anybody in the county may opt in if they would like to automatically.
Correct.
So the opt out program, which puts everybody on that automatically, is only if a town select board decides, or uh maybe they have to have a full town meeting vote, decides that they want to be opt out, they put everybody as.
Correct, and they don't have to have a town meeting vote to opt everyone into the county.
The benefit being, the more people that are under this program, that are buying power they have to buy lower electricity rates. And at any given time, any individual customer or client can opt out at any time.
Right.
Even if the town Salem said, everybody's gonna default to community power. And someone said, I don't like that, they can opt out and just default back to, well, Liberty or Eversource, whatever that is. But remember, it's a scale, and the more people that are involved, the better price you get.
Potential lower rates, if more people get involved.
Yeah.
But that's just, that's an overall kind of thing.
Right, and like I had mentioned, um Major Bashaw, when he brought it up, it, you know, it's a political thing, and you gotta talk about that, it's a political decision, you know? Some people like it, some don't, but at the end of the day, you know? But if you're trying to lower electricity rates for everybody.
Can can a town or the county be involved in more than one program like this? Like, you you appear to have competition, uh standard power, maybe there's some other energy coalitions that I'm not aware of, do you have competition?
There are a couple of firms, Standard Power is one of them, that are providing community power sources.
Any other nonprofits?
Yeah, that's my knowledge.
Got your commission, boy.
I mean, I think based on our organization, we would, if we voted to participate in a community power program, we would probably have to go out to bid for the management thereof.
That was the question that I was thinking about too, because of our, you know, the way we are, we're set up as a county government entity. We've got to put out, even though there's no price tag really put on it, um we'd have to see, I guess we'd still have to do an RFP and, you know, ask anybody that's interested in
Yeah.
being this uh source, we have to do it without, how do you say it? So I agree with that, Commissioner, I was thinking the same thing, there's only my other questions. So.
It's, yeah, I, there there's one more, there's a slide before this slide that I think is, I wanna make sure we we talk through. So let's say you set up the county program, and then a town select board votes to join, what happens in that town? Uh at least thirty days before the program launches, every single electric customer in that town will receive a letter in the mail. It would say, Rockingham Community Power, welcome to Rockingham Community Power, here's our rate, here's how much we're saving relative to your Eversource rate or your units only. Uh and it would have the customer service and, or each, or communitypowernh.gov, uh the email address, the phone number, customers can call, they can get all the information they need about the program, it's all in that letter and it's all online. And then any customer can go to the website, call the phone number, learn about the program, or opt in, opt out, or opt up to a higher, more clean energy product. So there's thirty days, you have to have a public meeting uh within fifteen days of us sending that letter, they can support that. And then after the thirty day period.
Where are you?
The next time that customer's meter gets read by the utility to process a monthly electric bill, they will get switched into the Rocky Hill Community Power program. And then at any point after that, they can opt out anytime they want, there's no penalties for coming and going, any customer can voluntarily come in and have the program. Um but on launch, it becomes the new default for customers that take the election.
On the multiple uh power programs, is that, I I would, once we join, is it exclusive? Or can we, uh could we sign an agreement with Standard Power, with your group, and another one, and then give everybody choices?
So there's terms, if you were to sign up related to Standard Power, you'd have a term, a two to three year term. Sign up with Coalition, we have a a thirty six month term, and I wanna be clear, it's it's not a thirty six month rate. Because we're, one of the things that.
It is an exclusive during that term.
Well, yeah, once you're in, once you have a rate to buy power, take service for the, for a certain term, then at the end of that term, you can go find another provider, or there are, you know, termination provisions.
Okay, so it's one, one firm, one option at a time?
That's right.
Um the interesting thing, for instance, Eversource is typically probably one of the highest electric rates out of the five that we have, and in Salem, they have Liberty, which is probably lower. Um so I guess that conversation with the town council in Salem, they have to kind of look at and 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 for instance, in Derry, you know, I have, in Derry, I could split up the town in three different, yes, three different companies that have this, you know what I'm saying, I have Eversource, and they have Liberty. And that's the tricky part, the only good thing is, is the client, the customer at any time can opt out, they didn't like the rate. So you bought, and you're buying in six month increments power, right?
In a sense, and it's a good question, I wanna pack that.
Okay.
Um so we set rates every six months, cause utilities set rates every six months. But we actually have the flexibility to buy in the market reality, so we actually have a portfolio of blocks of power. We buy a chunk here, a chunk there, and we layer this portfolio out over time, so that's one of our advantages to the utility pricing. Um but yes, we are more or less finding our uh short term blocks at this point.
Yeah, but you could buy power at any time, you see a good deal out there, you're gonna, you're gonna grab that, but you're saying, setting rates is everything.
That's right, and if we actually go, I'm jumping around, I think it's helpful, if you go back a few slides, it might be, I'm looking for slide number seven. Or actually, I'm looking for slide number six, if you would. Thank you, um so right now, Eversource on the far right has a twelve point five eight cent rate, the gray bar is sort of hidden, but you'll see it. And the community power rate is ten point nine cents, so there's, there's good savings on the supply side now. Uh and for those eighty thousand customers across the state, it's been about ten million dollars in energy savings just since April or May um of this year, really in the first year, starting in April and May. Um so that's how the rate compares, and and the thing I wanna note is uh this week or next week, Eversource is gonna announce rates for the next period, it might, I don't think they've done it yet, but it's, it's any day now. Um so they're gonna change their rate on February one, through the end of July next year, and then we'll shortly, they'll announce their rates, we'll announce our rates, and you, so you're in a good place, and you'll get to see what's the next period gonna look like.
Well, let me ask, I'm, I'm gonna use this up there, so there's no guarantee that you're gonna have to be lower, however, it's most advantageous for community power to be lower, right?
Right.
So you're doing everything you can to be always under, let's say, if we're just using Eversource here, you're gonna be, that's the way it's gonna benefit people, right, so you you guys are watching these rates. You're buying power, what is at its cheapest, but there's no guarantee, there could be a time where you're, you're, you're locking in a rate that's actually higher than Eversource, right?
It it's, it's possible that, you know, there may be points in time where the rate is higher than Eversource, it's unlikely, and on average, year over year, we've got advantage where we're most likely gonna save customers money, but it's because, a couple of things, but, you know, the order is completely member driven, so our board is all, you know, folks from counties and towns and cities, so the interests are of those towns and cities, it's nonprofit, there's nonprofit motive there, so the interests are all sort of aligned. Um and then we have certain advantages in the market, right?
And if that scenario ever happens, obviously, customers at any time. Individual c- customers, businesses to say, I'm off tonight.
Right.
And they, they default back to what they had. So really, I mean, it's, so it's just being, I think it's more of the consumer being aware of their bill. Is what it boils down to, like I had mentioned earlier, I open up my electric bill, and I'm sorry, I'm one of those people, I open up my electric bill, I'm like, yeah, pay it. I write the check, I'm not looking at, how much is the transmission rate, and how much is, you know, I'm not looking at those. Um, details per se. And can I, can I shave off a couple of cents here or there, I'm not doing. And maybe I think with this process, it makes more people aware, um. Um, you know, if they, if they wanna make savings, they can make savings. Uh, that's number one, and then number two, you don't get into it with the green stuff, but I don't wanna complicate things more than.
Right.
They are at this point, but.
I just have a quick question, cause I'm, I'm a little bit confused, the county. The complex, we have to go out to RFP for our electricity. And we do, we've not used Ever Source for probably ten years, we have Constellation right now. So we have a fixed contract with Constellation, they give us their best deal, they offer us one year, two year, three year, whatever, and we sign up for it. We still pay Ever Source for the transmission, cause they're the only game in town here at Rockingham County. How do, how do we fit into this scenario?
Yes, that's a great question, um, so it's up to the county. Um, the second part, what you said, is always the same, so you're always gonna pay Ever Source for transmission, even if you're with us, but now you can choose, either you can RFP it. Or, I mean, what you, what, I can say what Cheshire did, if that's helpful, so. Cheshire County was in a constellation contract for the county facilities.
Yep.
Um, and then that contract expired this past November. And they have forty electric accounts, and they just took those forty electric accounts, and they moved them into the Cheshire Community Power rate. Um, so you might wanna RFP for that, uh, Cheshire didn't, but.
I think we, we have a statutory requirement, which is more than five thousand, right?
Well, there's a bid waiver.
Yeah.
They did a bid waiver, now it's ten, but they did a bid waiver probably, to just put in, I'm just guessing.
Yeah.
If they didn't go out to bid, and obviously it was way more than five thousand dollars, to that point, it was five thousand dollars for a bid threshold, they must have done a bid waiver.
Probably, and I might not be, I, I maybe not up to speed with all the details that they processed given this, but I'll say.
Okay, so, so out of this, if, if we were to support this plan and have Rockham County plan. By default, are we having to, as a rate payer ourselves, as far as the county facility? Having to go in and, you know, again, like Jude said, right now, we have constellations. Would, by default, the county heading this program have to be, you know, paying, just, we could only go with. You know, community power?
No, you're, you can do, you can have it if you have a constitution or whatever.
So it's more really, I don't think I'm wrong. Of letting businesses and residents have it available to them.
Right, it's, at the end of the day, the customer, if it's a county facility, if it's a household, it's a business, the customer always has to choose. So, yeah, your, your county facilities are not obligated to participate.
But the way we choose is annoyed by RFP process.
Right. Thank you.
Question there?
Okay, so I have two more questions regarding the organization itself. How many A employees does the, does Community Power have?
Uh, we have four, we have four, but I'm gonna, then we have a lot of vendors, so I'm gonna go back to slide, uh, sorry, I was jumping around, but this is, be a great question, slide five, thanks. So what is the board, twenty members of the board, elected members, we talked about that, on the right is more the, the operations. So Brian Kalman, that's his, he's our CEO, he was vice president of power supply here at Northern Electric Co-op. So he's got twenty years of public power utility experience, buying, selling, you know, until he's got power. And he's running the company, um, and then on staff, we have myself, I'm the director of member services. Got um, a director of administration, uh, we have a director of regulatory legislative affairs, and we're gonna have a couple more staff next year. So it's four this year, and we might bring a couple more on board next year. In addition to our staff, we have outside legal, accounting, banking, financial services. And we have a couple of firms on the operations side, so Ascend Analytics is advising on how we purchase electricity, how we engage in the ISO. Uh, New England Power Markets and Procure, and then Calpine is doing our customer service, our contact center, utility billing. Uh, we've got some community engagement folks, so I've seen, I met Andrew Hatch.
And you also have circuit providers.
That's a separate organization, but we collaborate, okay, so there are, there's a, there's a good team of professional vendors involved in this. And, and just to speak to this a little bit more, so we're talking about. A large volume procurement, we're talking about this year fifty million in revenue for the electricity sales, next year maybe a hundred million in revenue. That revenue is controlled by those board directors and by the nonprofit, the vast majority of that, you know, eighty five, ninety percent of that is paying for the cost of power supply. There is a little sliver, two or three percent, that's paid for our overhead, our staff, a couple of offices. Um, and then there are net revenues, there's an additional portion of the rate that capitalizes a reserve fund, or, or putting. Uh, net revenue into a reserve fund for future benefit for the communities. We can build the organization, we can finance the stable, and the credit rating, the balance sheet, um, and we can protect against. Rate shock, we can, we can protect against future rate changes, so again, part of the, this is the detail, getting into the details, but part of this is about transparency. Where is this large quantity of revenue associated with power sales going, and how is it contributing to community benefit in that term?
So can you outline that for us in more specific terms, not at this moment, but. Can you, because my next question was, what percentage of the gross income is going towards administration? And you touched on that, and it's divided between salaries, vendor.
Right.
Costs, and you, and you're saying you have some kind of capital reserve fund.
We do.
Um, so I, I don't think we need it right at this minute, but I would like.
All of I could send a financial report, it's, it'll break out, um, exactly, yeah, yeah, we have that, so let me take a minute.
So that we would know what the percentage for administration.
Right.
Would be compared to what you're actually buying the power for.
That's right.
Cause obviously, you're buying it for less, but it's, there are a lot of costs involved in buying power.
Right, but being a nonprofit, obviously, you have to pay their overhead.
Yeah, we don't call it profit, we call it administration.
No, but again, there's different, there's operating, which is very small, so our administrative or operating costs is a very small part of the rate.
Yeah.
There's a, and then there's the power costs. And there's a third piece, and that's this reserve, so we are, we are building up a capital reserve fund, or. We'll call it a real reserve fund, and the, with a target, and it's one hundred and twenty days of operating. And that's just to ensure all our bases are covered, and. Uh, over the next five years, we'll grow up to having a hundred twenty days of cash in the bank. Um, so, you know, we have our, we have a good balance sheet, we have a good asset, we have lowering our, we're lowering our financing costs. And we're ensuring the rate can remain low.
I'm just gonna ask, if I can't see her, uh, Commissioner Foyle, do you have any, any other questions you wanna ask, I can't see you.
Not at this time, I'm just taking it in.
All right.
Commissioner Gadoo asked a number of questions I had, and I guess now it's like, we need to, uh, do some more research and. Overall, I think it's a, it seems like it has a lot of promise.
Yeah.
Commissioner, could I just ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Opting into a program like this, does this have any impact on communities that are engaging in solar production, that they're then reselling to the grid? Does it give you a seat at the table, or does it make community power beneficiary of those proceeds?
That's a great question, um. So, oh, in the short term, folks who have solar panel in their room for doing that metering. Um, right now, they're not able to participate, and it's just a technical issue with utilities, and we need to get the right data from the utilities, so. When we, when a town rules, the folks who have solar panels, they just don't get it, it stays exactly the same. In the future, that'll change, they'll be able to participate and do their same that metering, but as part of the Rockingham Community Power. And then, I mean, there's the, the longer answer we began to, over time, there can be more uh innovative rate offerings for customers. Net metering rates, time of use rates, rates for charging your electric vehicle at night, pay a discount, so there's more rates that can come. This is, you know, a couple of years out, probably, um. So tho- those are all factors, and the, the final piece of this is development of a project. So some of the towns are very motivated, they've got a cap landfill, they wanna put a megawatt or five megawatts of solar on it, and they wanna sell that power into their community power building. Um, again, that's not gonna happen next year, maybe not a year after that, but the plans are beginning for actually developing local energy generators to supply.
Yeah, cause specifically, the county is looking at a five megawatt field, and Kingston, we're looking at a cap landfill, five megawatt. Field, does that, does that, does that now put you at a seat at the table of decision making for that community, once they opt into that?
Hmm.
Or limit the town's ability to autonomously negotiate for those rates for that service?
No, uh, the town can either pursue that project unilaterally, or just its municipal accounts and facilities. And they can do that if they'd like, or now the town has an additional option, which is to pursue that facility. In conjunction with community power, so that the generation from that facility actually goes to households in addition to just the county building, or the town buildings. So it's just, it's one more option of how to do it, they don't need to, we, we certainly couldn't interfere with the town's decision making on developing, involving. All right, thanks.
Yeah. Any more, any more questions at all, or? Detail, I'm sorry. Good luck, question's all right.
One more, um, just a quick question, sort of dovetailing with that, if we're selling, so. With the, and maybe I'm just confused, but with the county, because essentially, with the solar arrays, we're selling our. Power back to. Ever Source, right? So would the county itself have to opt out?
Um. If, for whatever facilities. Yeah, I, uh, I don't know that I know of the exact answer to that, you have, e- either, you would just keep those accounts on the Ever Source supply rate. Um, I think that's most likely what you would do. Um, if I'm, you were saying, if there was a solar array associated with that metering with the county buildings?
What would, would contracted to put one in?
Yeah, gotcha, yeah, so you're gonna have zero electric bill, I mean, pays for all the coming costs. So, yeah, right, that's, that's exciting, um, yeah, you would pursue that, you would continue along with that project, independent of this program. And so, so in this case, really, we're just gonna be the vehicle for other towns to be able to pick, to use it, basically. We don't necessarily have to use it.
Yeah, right.
But that's how I'm seeing it, that's what I'm saying.
No, that's true.
Could you buy power from us?
I will take the solar now.
Some of the towns are thinking about, how can we develop a solar array? And, you know, feed that power into the portfolio of the program, so.
Because we probably will be much more efficient in supplying you energy once we're out there running. Than some firms that have built for profit, since we're built just to.
Not only, not only that, but like, he didn't really get into this, but I just had the presentation of what the county needs. There are options for people to pay even a little bit more for green energy. So if we were, and we were allowed to sell back our solar, um. Energy back to you, you're gonna reset, you're gonna repackage that as green energy, that some clients choose to pay a little bit more because it's green energy, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's an option for a customer, a customer could go to the website and pick a hundred percent free power and pay a little tribute.
So we could conceivably actually make more money than we would have just sending it back to the stores. It could.
There's a lot of options for how these programs would be.
Right.
So when follow up, but I'll, I'll just send, you know, that more de- a little more detail, and, um. Yeah, I understand it made me to do a, a statement taking process, but I'll go ahead and send powers, joint powers of movement, as a document that. I've got it, I see, um, so, yeah, I don't need to send it, but, um, got it, I'll do it then.
And unless you can make copies for anything.
And, and just another, other item in follow up.
Okay. Uh, and then one last quick question, um, so, being in Derry, where my dairy hat, I asked my town administrator what's going on. With the standard power, and he said it's fully locked right now, because electric rates are very volatile. And that we're just seeing in the market.
Uh, electric rates are coming down. So, so what happened was, last week, Unitil announced its rate for the next six months. Uh, starting in February, and it's ten point seven cents, so it's actually lower than what we've got right now, so we're gonna change rates. For the regular period, and we'll be forced down, but there's, there's a lot of conditions that's driving the price down right now.
Interesting.
Um, so vol- it might be volatile in the sense that we were here and now we're here. But, yeah.
Okay. Just curious.
It might be hard for, uh, for some firms to compete in a low price environment, that's how we.
So how many players are there up there?
There's, I know, in addition to Standard Power, there's pre-energization, there's solar power, um, and there are other brands, yes. They have, they work together, that's one.
All right, any other questions for anybody before we wrap it up?
Yes.
So, and in my hometown, the town that runs law, when private broker. We have a contract with it, we, we wanted to add it, but we need to, I don't know if it's on there, it's on there, but we must be a family, but.
Yeah, it's quite possible, you'd wanna look at that, you wanna see if there's a penalty or an exit fee, and that's for the town, the town accounts, I would.
Right. We just do, I mean, this.
Right.
Uh, solar panels are.
No, we have, we had white calling, but now they've changed a couple of times. We've got another, but it is a private broker, and we only do our town buildings. I, I wanna guess this, penalty we get out.
I, it's quite possible, oftentimes there is. Again, so there, through that kind of arrangement, with this kind of arrangement, there would not be.
Okay, uh, this is really good information, I think, so thank you, gentlemen, for coming, and the other thing is, is, um, you said that we could. We had a formal group. You have to form a committee, and a town decides to join, let's say, we set this up. Town decides to join, and you can actually have someone, like, uh, Jim, for Stocker, he wants to be. With his, uh, his community, he wants to be that person that's on that group. Is that typically how you can see it?
It, it's a good way to have a good communication flow from the county, set of different towns, um, and then, you know, the law requires, you set up a meeting, so. Uh, if there is other folk, if there's folks like Jim, it's great to have somebody from a different town who's eager to potentially participate, just in, in the room.
Yeah, and I did send, uh, Leila, copy of the Cheshire County.
Yeah.
Community plan.
Yeah.
And you, you mentioned they have templates.
Yeah, so we'll give that template.
So then, last question for me would be, you would mention this was, would be a ninety one A.
That's right.
Okay, so who's responsible for the ninety one A, if someone requests information, are they coming to the county, like, we set this up, or are they coming to community power? Uh, because I, because I don't really control the minutes, if it's, if the county's responsible for ninety one A with us. Then we need to make sure that we get the minutes and get all this stuff, and.
No, we would be, if they, I mean, if, you know, we've got fours, and we've got seven committees at the board. And each of those meetings is publicly noticed, and each of those meetings has minutes, and they're, so if it's associated with any of that, uh, that would certainly help us.
So the ninety one A request would come to you guys, not us?
I, I can't guarantee that, no, no one's ever gonna send you a ninety one A request about this, but, but, yeah, we would do the last bit of the administration.
Okay, Commissioner Foyle?
Just under ninety one A, you don't have a duty to procure documents that don't, don't exist within your, so, your, um. Record keeping, so we wouldn't have a duty to procure any records of minutes of community power. That we don't have, or, or that we didn't generate, so we just direct them to, it's a ninety one A request to go to community power, to get.
Right, so, very good.
Thank you very much, that was very, very, uh. Not a lot, thank you. And, um, I, I'll just reply, we're the group of correspondents, I can send channels right away.
Thank you very much, it was very, uh, insightful.
Great discussion, you had, you had a lot to talk anymore, several days.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
We're non-publics.
Yeah, well, first of.
Oh, public comment?
Yeah, so, comment, it's time, I'm gonna ask you to double comment, are you gonna say something?
Yes.
Such a fun, all you folks know, thrilled to be here today, uh, I wanna stay engaged, and it's a nice, a nursing home in December and dinner is pretty warm, so I'm gonna. Try and come in here on Thursdays, uh, obviously, I'm gonna rerun to the position of, uh, state victory, so. I'm excited, I've been watching the building across the street, I'm very excited, and. Uh, there's a reason why Rockingham is looked at for the other nine, uh, counties, and folks have still kept this number one, so. Keep rocking him strong, and I'd like to see everybody, thank you.
Very good, good to see you, Tom. Um, okay, now we'll, uh, take our motion to go into non-public.
I move to enter into non-public pursuant to ninety one A colon three, um, I, how many do we have, Allison? Um, I, how many do we have, Allison, that you have?
I think, um, we have the follow-up one, um, and to last week's discussion, and then, uh, the sheriff's one, too.
Okay, so at this point, and we also have one with Department of Corrections, so I think we should start with, uh, the sheriff's. Department, since they're there, and then, um, superintendent, I'll. Um, text you when we're ready for you, is that okay? I think it's okay.
Yeah.
Bye, everybody.
So, um.
Pick him out.
Who, who do you want, we have, you want?
Thank you, Leila.
This thing, record again. Hey, Commissioner Foyle?
See, we are out of non-public, and we had, uh, three non-public sessions, and I moved to seal. The minutes indefinitely in all three instances, because, uh, the divulgence of the information could render. Proposed action ineffective at this point.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, um, on the motion, Commissioner Gaddu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I go, yes. And there's only one more motion left.
Motion to adjourn.
Whoa, you beat me to it.